Evening and welcome to May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen Planning Board Meeting. The first item in the agenda is a site plan review for Francis and Nancy Burl, which they've asked for a continuous. So we should probably, well, we should open the hearing, continue until...
I think it's the twenty-second of June?
Twenty-second?
Yep. That is a Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to continue until June twenty-second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Second item in the agenda is a continuation of subdivision for Dean Gibson and East Coast Industrial Properties on the west side of Perkins Pond Road, map four-ten, lot fifty-seven. The RA zone, or this continuation, I don't think we accepted as complete or anything at this point.
Why don't we wait till we are there before we...
I have some new plans.
Are we moving to continue this? No.
Oh.
It was continued.
Got it.
The only thing I noticed going through the agenda in the map was a waiver for partial property for the years, portion of property.
This homework came out last meeting.
It was kind of a couple of weeks.
Oh, I see. I wonder if this is the one I'm...
Do a fresh paint play here on it.
Oh, this is fine. Going into the big map? All of us the same? I'm sorry, what is this application for?
For a four lots subdivision.
Okay.
On the checklist? I'll get back to number fifteen in a minute, but... Number seventeen? He doesn't have all the monuments in place and one in the front and everything that's required.
Actually, I noted that in the map and didn't notice it, no checklist.
I think I saw. Twelve monuments, both monuments are missing.
I count eleven.
Yeah, there's one on the back. Is there a little section of stone wall on the back one? Actually, that one on the back can come off, you can get rid of that bearing, a distance from the stone wall and just combine it with the other one.
That's up...
Same bearing.
That's up to him.
I've actually changed that back line on the new plan. But same amount of monuments. We found a state. I know you're going through, no, well, I guess I'll get, I'll explain my changes on the new plan, they're minor changes, but whatever. I was gonna get into it when you start, anyway.
I think we can accept it as complete and then add those monuments. I also got a little question on note sixteen, if the flood hazard and the possible flood zone, but that might be fixed too.
I'd like to work on it except that it's complete.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I need to appoint John as the voting number.
Aye.
Soon as I saw you like, oh!
His lips did move.
He didn't say anything, so I knew something was wrong. Mr. Sisley, two words please.
Okay. So this is a proposal to subdivide tax lot four-ten, fifty-seven and four lots. The total area on the new plan, which I haven't corrected, I didn't correct, is thirty-eight point three-nine, if you want to make that change, that I gotta do. I changed the areas. And the areas, the areas changed because of my back property line. I found a stake in stones in the back southwest corner, and so that line kicked, kicked it off that stone wall, that little bit of stone wall, a little bit, so... Back line changed a little bit, and that increased the areas every lot a little bit, so that's the change on the new plan. The other thing, the other thing the plan shows is the, a discussion with the Conservation Commission, the buffer, hundred-foot buffer from the prime wetland of Perkins Pond, and I located Perkins Pond and showed the buffer. And one of the little items, there's a, there was another wetland, we had Tom Carr go back out right in the front of lot fifty-seven-two. There's another small wetland there, but it doesn't, didn't really affect anything. Didn't affect any of our driveways or...
Art, did you say that you need to put the hundred-foot line or that it's here?
It's there.
It's on the big plan.
Oh. It's on the new plan, so you gotta look at the new plan. All that I was describing was the new plan. That's basically what changed from that, from the other one.
No, I don't think so.
It's all fairly minor. I think it's a kind of minor, or four lots of... Oh, and there's a new owner also, sorry. Since, since the, we applied. And the new owners... I don't have...
Let's listen to Art, please.
Thank you. I'm saying there's a new owner also, that's, that's another thing, but I didn't, I didn't put their name on the plan, 'cause we applied with the name that's on the plan, so... The new owners are GM Investment Partners, LLP, so I'll be changing that on the new plan, on the next plan, revised plan.
Art, I'm sorry, but could you explain the hundred-foot buffer and why, why you have it where it is?
Well, the Conservation Commission looked it up in Perkins Pond as a prime wetland, and I went over it and located the edge of it, and... Some of it goes onto the property, of our property, and half of it goes on, as you can see, the dotted area there is partially on and partially off that lot.
So how, how is the edge of the prime wetland determined?
I used what I considered the high watermark.
But the buffer is not on your property, is that correct?
Some of it is.
Yeah, a little bit of it. Are there any uses allowed in the prime wetland?
Pardon?
Are there any uses allowed in the prime wetland?
Buffer?
Buffer?
I don't believe so, but I have...
They're trying to be cutting...
No, I, I don't know that, I can find out.
I'm just, is it, the symbol's the same as the wetland buffer, so I was wondering if it's the same usage?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah. Good question. I'll find out.
Why is the driveway for lot fifty-seven dot two inside the stone wall? Why not move it south a little bit, width out of the stone wall?
What's that again?
The driveway for lot fifty-seven-two. If you moved it south a hundred and fifty feet...
Oh, so it's enough, so it doesn't have to go through the...
Yeah, so it doesn't have to go through a stone wall.
Uh, you can move it over if you...
I was just wondering if you had a reason?
No. Well, there's a hill there. See that seven-hundred?
Yes.
We were trying to stay away from that hill, I think. I think that's the reason, actually. If you're right, if you're...
By, by rural site distance, yes.
Well, I think the site distance is okay, it's just that you'd be cutting into that hill where it's a slatter driveway, where I have it.
Okay. Well, the little things, some of the little things I noticed in note number three. Lots of ten acres, line says lots of ten acres. The next word is probably the or instead of of.
Yeah, yeah.
Agricultural spell drawn, number two. Possible flood zone A along this property line up there by lot one-ninety-seven.
What does that say?
With the new foot line, with the new P O map, should be on Oprah real close, but isn't it?
Fifty feet of foundation.
You can zoom in and you scan it in and you line up the two roads, you should have pretty good...
I'll look at it again.
And Bruce mentions the monuments along the front, the angle points.
Mentioned what?
The monuments along the front, along Perkins Pond Road, at all those angle points.
You want monuments at all those angle points?
Yes, Bruce, Bruce caught that in our, we were doing our latest subdivision review slash revision, and Bruce caught that, and we have not been doing that. I will give Mr. Phil more credit for that one for us, do. Yes, all angle points and changes in bearing shall be going with it, according to the regulations.
Along the roads?
Yes, and the stone wall. Yeah.
And the stone wall?
Yes. That bearing is south seventy-three, thirty-one, forty-three west, over on lot fifty-seven, here. If you go up Perkins Pond Road, go up that stone wall.
Which one? Oh.
Then you go to south seventy-three, thirty-one, forty-three west.
So where would I have a tick mark, is what you're saying?
Yes. We need a monument.
Be a lot less tick marks on it. Tell you that.
This line right here.
Doesn't, doesn't look like a drawn straight.
Yeah, it says like three, three angle points in there.
Yeah, I think it's a barbed wire line. There's barbed wire along that. I'll look at that, I think it's, I think it's barbed wire. Again, that'll be a straight line.
Yeah, if it's a barbed wire going from three to three, and...
It's not the property line.
It's not the property line.
As it's called for.
It's held, it's turned into pizza.
Right.
Yeah, and if it's called for, then it is.
I took a walk out there about a month ago. There seems to be some ledge out there.
Oh, back?
Yeah, even right by that stone wall on lot fifty-seven. About we have your fourth out, your four K area. I think on the right-hand side of that, there's a, about a five-foot rise of ledge right there. I know the state doesn't require it, and our regs don't require it, acquire it. And I'm gonna bring it up, we're doing our subdivision regs about some test steps, even if they're only four feet deep, just to go that's suitable. You might wanna look at that for that four K area, I don't think that's a viable four K area.
Okay.
Where are you talking? I think there's an issue.
How far do driveways need to be from wetlands?
Twenty-five feet.
Okay.
The topo in the back, I realize that rises up quite sharply back there. But because they've got, every lot has to cross a wetlands to get to it, and it's a steep slope. Will we put a note on here somewhere that there'll be no building in that area?
You're talking the opposite side of the...
Yeah.
How about no building unless a wetland permit is received from the, yes?
Yeah, with a steep slope, I, I... Because there's no topo back there? I don't know, I mean, that's, I think it's a steep slope, we don't have a steep slope on this. When I walked up there, it was looking up.
So who's gonna build out there?
That's why...
Who knows?
And if they, and if they pay enough money, why wouldn't, why, why wouldn't you let them? What's, what, we, it's nothing to be afraid of, if they wanna spend the money to do it, well... I don't think anybody's gonna be building out there.
Part of my objection, the reason I bring it up is that kind of, we've let lot line adjustments and big open areas of lots go without topo being done, because, you know, they're, they're big parcels, but we're breaking it up into everything you can here, even though they're technical lots. The topo should be...
I think the idea is to show that they're buildable somewhere on that thing.
That's not what the zoning, that's not what the subdivision regulations say. Subdivision regulations say we can redo waivers for simple lot line adjustments and stuff like that on topo, not subdivisions.
Yeah, but it's a hardship to the applicant.
You're just spending, you're just spending money that's...
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying, it's not really, I, once I walked out there, I saw what it was.
Yeah.
It's not really buildable. It is, but it's not...
So why not protect your position by doing as you suggested, saying that's not buildable since we don't have the topo? And to put the topo up there wouldn't, the requirement wouldn't make economic sense.
Right. I'm not saying ask to do the topo, that's why I asked you to put a note on the plan saying let's not build it back there, we have to cross a wetlands to get to it. Couldn't be a hardship on anybody that way.
Okay.
What's the alternative?
Show the topo on here?
I, I have no, I have no problem with that, I'm not gonna own the lot in the end.
It's, it's not likely you'd get a dredge and fill permit anyway, because...
Right.
You've got building area, lots of...
I don't see anybody doing that there.
On the roadside, right.
Well, if you wanna get, if you wanna get a wetland permit, still we ought to get one, for access to the back porch?
Yeah, for something else.
Okay, how about a note that says no building without coming back to the planning board? And then whoever wants to do it, then they would do their individual topo on their lot, 'cause that's what you'd be asking for.
I don't wanna have to ask anybody to come back here either.
Well, you're asking them they can't do anything with their property. I'd say, I'd say if they really want, if they really wanted to do it, then they gotta come back. It's better that at least they have a choice to not build or build. You're saying none.
I think if somebody could prove they could build in the back, I haven't seen it. Don't, who wants to see it?
I don't think you could.
But if somebody wanted to, and they could prove they could do it...
That's why, that's why, give them the option. They should have an option.
I'm with you, Bruce.
No building, no building west of the wetland unless planning board approval is received or something like that.
When you say no building, does that include everything? Like if somebody wanted to put a barn back there, or a shed back there, or are you just talking about building out?
Something with water, sewer type of thing?
Nothing habitable.
Yeah.
Okay, so if, if a person, you know, they have ten acres in law, a barn back there, he could horse it, and then that doesn't preclude that?
Right, that, that, at least that's not what I'm, I was, you know, strictly thinking of water and sewer, something that would be habitable.
I don't wanna see it set a precedent that you don't wanna...
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
You may have, you may have a piece of property, and I don't wanna show the topo back there 'cause I don't wanna spend the money, but it could be nice land. So if you sit, you know, if you say no, that at least they have an option, like Craig said, let's say come back to the planning board.
That's why, why making multiple offers to you and see which one you do, so we're not setting a precedent.
I like Craig's, I like Craig's...
I, I think the new, in the hearing, through the discussion, I would say no residences west of the wetland, is that prior planning board approval?
I'm okay with that.
I don't think we'll ever hear one.
I don't either, 'cause I looked at it, but I just...
I'll take whatever you're writing, I'm not gonna write it down.
And I like, you know, some of the waiver for not doing the topo in that section of the lots.
Oh, we do, we do have that waiver.
Oh, do we?
We should, we should bring it, I'm sorry.
Do we have the authority to do that?
A waiver?
Yes.
And we can...
In a subdivision?
Yes.
But we can make the waiver contingent on that note on the plan. That's supposed to just blank a little grant thing, huh?
I'd see, like seeing that number five changed, put a period after regulations and get rid of the, of the ten percent grade.
What's that?
That's number five.
Changed to what?
Put a period after regulations and get rid of the second part of the ten percent grade.
Oh, yeah.
Just because we changed the regulations here a while ago and...
I'll try, just get rid of, just put regulations period?
Yes.
I know, I, I think it says it on some...
That's the standard, yes, I know, I know, we have to change that, so true. Meaning the planning board has changed that. Not that I'm suggesting we should do this, but Article twenty-seven does allow us to force a cluster on this. Not that I think we should do it, but I thought I better bring it up, or I'd be remitting my duties.
Okay, I didn't agree with you, I understand.
Article twenty-seven, cluster, says that the planning board makes an determination, basically, if we want a cluster on this process, I don't want one, but I just thought I'd figure it out.
Can you explain that, Bruce?
Uh, page thirty-five.
Yep.
Article twenty-seven dot three dot one, pretty much explains, cluster development may be permitted or required in a residential or RA district, including the Rural Conservation overlay, after consultation and recommendation by the Conservation Commission, the planning board may require that a subdivision be proposed as a cluster development. I don't think we should, but we have a break through.
Just for my purpose, does it define in here what a cluster bit?
Oh, yeah.
Is that in the definitions area?
Oh, Article twenty, oh, Article twenty-seven.
I'm just curious, all right, what would a cluster yield?
Do eight lots here.
Yeah!
Wouldn't be pretty.
With the wetlands, bisecting, nothing like that?
Yeah, I got, I got, I didn't, I didn't bring the plan, I meant to.
Or did you do a little layout?
I have to, I did a layout, 'cause I thought for sure the Conservation Commission was gonna, but they didn't, so... I didn't have to get into that with them.
That surprised me, Perkins Pond right there.
There's all kinds of conservation land around it.
Yeah.
Frank, I would agree with you, I would not recommend it.
I don't think, I don't think, I think this subdivision's fine. If you're gonna put in a road and a bunch of five-acre lots, I might think otherwise, but... Do you wanna do a sidewalk? Bruce already did, so Bruce probably didn't wanna do another one.
I did it when the leaves came out.
I'm not sure we need one on this.
I'm just asking, I don't, I drove it and walked a little bit over.
Would it be, would it be advantageous to do a sidewalk? What would we, what was, what would we be looking for, that we would see on this plan, other than the area that's not, that doesn't have a topo?
More walls and trees.
And water.
Take some mosquitoes.
See enough of those at my house, and black flies.
The front part here is, you know, it's fair, it wasn't a lot of, there's some grade there, but it wasn't any real steep slope, I mean, it was...
I didn't see anything to get concerned about, like...
No, I didn't either, except for the, what appeared to be a ledge outcropping by that four K area.
Art, is the budding property here, the old Gordon Russell place?
Yes.
How far back in are the houses going to be built, any sense?
With more than thirty-five feet?
More than, I mean... More than, I mean, lot fifty-seven-three, I think it has to be.
Two hundred plus.
I've got them, yeah, two hundred. I've got, I've got probably three hundred.
What's that?
The other lots?
All of them.
Two hundred plus?
I'd, I'd say maybe, maybe a hundred fifty, but they're gonna, they would be bad.
Fifty-seven's probably gonna be three hundred. Fifty-one is gonna be, uh, fifty-seven-one is gonna be probably two hundred. Fifty-seven-two will probably be a couple hundred.
Is, is the front along the road, and will that continue to be wooded?
Yes.
So will the houses be visible?
I don't think, I don't, that's hard to tell. Probably not, not unless you're really looking good. Driving by, you're probably not gonna see them. If you're walking, maybe. See the driveways cut in.
Any problem with the driveways on, on, um?
Sight distance.
Sight distance is good.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that. It's on the outside of the curve, basically, in one half section, so. Makes the sight distance a little easier outside of the road. And the road was pretty flat. It wasn't a big, big difference in grade in the road there. The, um, you gotta add a note about the current use status too. It's not current use. Look at that. Any, um? Note in the file what?
No.
I did give you the mail from conservation commission. Apologize for that. Art was present to present this subdivision to C C meeting tonight. The plan was thorough, which we appreciate along with the applicant's attendance. However, there was one item of significance that was not considered since Perkins Pond marches a prime wetland, the underneath to interface with. The D E S folks. There's a one hundred foot prime wetland buffer that extends onto the northernmost lot of the subdivision. Art assured us that he will research, designate and document by note the issue in the plan. It does not appear to be a game changer, but is important to properly address. We would like to have a look again once the revision is made. Please note if you have any questions.
You have a note in the file what?
I have.
They did review the plan. Actually, Bob and I were gonna go up there with a wheel and measure to the furthest point. To make sure it ma, it maintained that twenty-five hundred foot requirement, which it should.
It does. Take a straw with your wheel, if you want.
Take what?
A straw. With your wheel.
Out the window.
Out the window, okay.
Accurate measurement. And the police said no problem. And Wilbur's property abuts the fish and game land?
Yes.
I'd like to see some work. I, I don't know what you're allowed to do around the prime wetland buffer, if anything. And I'm not real sure the high watermark is the.
Yeah, I'll find out.
Correct. Edge of it. It may be, but I'm not that sure.
No. Since it's damn controlled, it's likely.
Well, the wetlands may creep up the hill, maybe the edge of the wetland, off the edge of the.
Yeah.
High watermark. Which would push the buffer back a little further. If you can't do anything in the prime wetland buffer, there should be a note saying.
No disturbance.
No disturbance period. Whereas the wetland buffer, you can at least cut the trees. I don't know if you can do that in the prime wetland buffer. Everything I've done, I've stayed away from those things as best as I could. So do you wanna see a test pit on lot fifty-seven? Or just look around and make, get a better location for four K?
Bruce's point was that in that particular location, uh, there was a problem, but not that there was a problem.
Everywhere else.
Right.
Correct. Yeah.
Right.
I'll just show the ledge and move that if it, if it needs moving.
And you're not obligated to put the septic system in that particular location?
No, it's the area that is suitable. But they have it, and everyone is, kind of, over.
Since I don't really know about the prime wetland, I would like to at least start the conservation commission. Hook out again. I'm not saying you have to go.
Want to leave?
Second Wednesday of next month.
The day before our next meeting.
No, it's not the day before. It's a week before. It's, uh, second Wednesday. Oh, oh, your, oh, your next meeting, sorry. Your work, your work, yes, sorry.
Art, does the same owner own land on the other side of the street too? No. Cause it says house to be removed. It originally was the same owner. It has subsequently been sold to a fellow named Alex LaCarte. Who has posted the demolition permit for thirty days, is getting ready to take the house down. So these folks owned it and sold it to him? Yep.
Alex, with an X?
Alex, Alex.
Z here.
Yeah, I wanna see if.
Yeah, I gotta check that. That's, that's.
Just checking. Same person who owns the camp.
Yep, yep. And his brother owns the log cabin that abuts the back end of that land.
The way people spell names, you never know nowadays.
Does any representative public like to speak? During that, I'll close it for public comment.
Why? Continue listening to him.
Well, I was thinking, you wanna go a month or you wanna go two weeks?
I'm afraid a month from now is gonna be kinda busy, depending on how that goes.
Apparently you guys didn't do anything drastic here.
No. Two weeks, I'm really like to dig into subdivision rigs some more.
Yeah, this won't take long.
No, I agree.
Can I hit your list quicker than waiting for the minutes to be made, or? Not that, not to dick. Sometimes they don't come.
You can put that in the minutes if you like.
Within a week, or maybe.
You'll have more than.
Can I hit the minutes in a week?
I don't know where they go after I pass them on.
June eighth is the next meeting.
I may not be here. I may be here. My list is agricultural spelled wrong. Note two, your acreage is in the same note. Note three, or rather than of. Note five, period after regulations. Current use note. Monuments along the front and the stone wall. The crooked line over there, the stone wall. Check the flood zone in that lot one ninety-seven area. Need to check on the prime wetland edge.
End uses.
End uses, yes. The four K in lot forty-seven. A note, note residence is west of the wetland. Without prior planning board approval. Check the spelling on Alexander. Depending on what you find in the prime wetland, it probably should be a separate note, so it stands out a little better than just in the middle of the plan.
What was that again?
Depending on what the prime wetland uses are.
In the buffer?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You may wanna make a separate note, so it, so it stands out a little better, and certainly a different hatching if it's different. I didn't mention that before, but label the buffer. You don't have that labeled anywhere, the wetland buffer?
Yeah, I was gonna do that.
Continue to win.
You say next meeting is due next?
Yep.
Did you just make a motion?
I did.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It'd be better if you wrote.
Um, it's customary to ask, maybe just for votes in one position.
So.
And then.
I was on a roll, wasn't I?
And then to announce the results.
So everybody voted for that? Anybody name? Have a statement? Looks to pass any other thing?
I'll be back.
Thank you, Neil. The next item on agenda is a site plan review for H K W properties fifty-five North Stock Road, map two oh three, lot twenty-six. Commercial zone with subdivision district overlay, I believe.
How do you do?
Good. I took the liberty to revise the site. I've had some time.
Thank you.
To make some improvements. And I also, uh, changed my mind on the building location. So I, I have these plans here that, uh.
For all these copies, is that?
Yeah, they're all the same.
Okay, please, we can share this one.
I, I'll, I'll tell you, I went back and forth on the building location. And this seems to be the best, uh, the best fit. I just wanna tell you a little bit about what I do and what my plans are. With this, uh. What does project?
He did not say his name, but his name is Harry Weatherby.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So my company performs geotechnical engineering services. And that, that is primarily involved with testing soil. And designing foundations and earth support systems. I've downsized my company considerably from my heyday back in Gostam.
Have a real.
Yeah, well, this is my, my desire now is to relocate my laboratory. Currently, I'm at thirty-three North Stock Ave. I occupy what used to be Brett Merrill's place in the back. Where he repaired the, uh, you know, snowmobiles and the ATVs. That's about, I think that's about three thousand square feet back there. It's far more than I need. I don't need to be paying that much rent. And this, uh, this building here is a good fit for me. It's thirty by forty. I wanted to occupy my property. And, uh, I, I think it's, uh, I think the time is good right now to do this. The, uh, the building's gonna be single stories, lab on grade. It's gonna be, and it, it looks like it's a permitted use in the village district. Uh, it closely correlates with a handyman shop. There's nothing in the ordinance that talks about geotechnical testing. Or geotechnical storing facilities. But it's a professional use and, uh, and I think the handyman garage probably comes, or handyman shop probably comes closest. What my intent, my proposed uses are, we're gonna store geotechnical test equipment. We have, uh, small, uh, penetrometers and devices that we use to measure the strength and permeability of soil. The boring, uh, equipment, we sub up. We don't have any boring rigs. I, uh, sold all my boring equipment years ago. So that's all subbed up. There's nothing big and obnoxious here. It's small equipment, portable. We also test soil for particle size, permeability and strength. And we use these results to, uh, design puddings and, uh, sometimes we get involved with like earth dam design and construction. We test concrete cylinders and we have a compression machine. It runs on one-ten, small machine. And the test cylinders are four inch diameter, six inch long cylinders. Typically, I have no more than two employees in the lab. We're busy now. I have, for the last twenty-five years, employed college students in the summer. Engineering students and several from where. And I have a young lady right now that started today, and she's gonna be working in the lab. So there's typically no more than two employees, uh, in, in the lab. It's quiet. There's no gasoline operated equipment, no, there's no vibration. I'm there, it's owner occupied. I'm, I'm there every day. Unless I'm at a meeting on a, on a job site. I'll also store some of my, you know, some of my own, uh, personal items inside. Because what I do with the, uh, the test equipment does not take up a lot of space. So, uh, that's the, uh, that's the objective here. And I put together a site plan. I, uh, I went through the checklist, tried to comply with all of the items that are required. I don't do site plan engineering. I, I'm a geotechnical engineer, but I, I put this together and I think it's going to, uh. I think it's going to address all your, all your questions and all the, uh, all the items that are required.
This three-story residence.
Before we get too involved in this, first I'm gonna say that I have worked with Harry in the past. Castle Reach, a few other projects we worked together. I don't think I have a conflict, conflict, I mean, we just professional relationship. I think I've recommended you do a couple of things for subs, that's about it really.
I have no objection.
I'm not stepping down, I'm just explaining.
Yeah.
Before anybody said, wow, later on, I thought it'd be upfront notice. Before we really get into this, we need to accept the application is complete.
Before you go into that, I'm gonna play the same thing Craig just did.
I was gonna say probably about everybody that does much work in the state's gonna say the same thing. I'm gonna say that for you.
I need to see the application before I can vote on it.
Mind to damp if you want it?
That's fine.
I had a little truck out of the way when I found out it was raining. First, firstly, I don't, I don't think the application is complete. There's a lot of things missing. I think, well, wetland stamp, uh, numerous little things.
Well, there's something very important that's missing, and that's number seven.
Which one's number seven?
Elevation.
In elevation, viewer photograph of all buildings.
Did you got a picture of the building in this application?
Yeah, what, can you hand me that one?
I missed something?
Picture of the existing building, picture of the existing building. No, no.
Yeah, but where's? I don't have that.
Here. Now you do.
Well, this, the problem with this is, I don't know that this meets the requirements of, of twenty-two.
I don't think it does either.
Twenty-two nine or twenty-two nine-one.
I do believe he's gonna side it.
What's twenty-two? Architectural design building compatible, compatible architectural styles. The exterior of all structures within the, the village district shall be architecturally compatible with the historic building details in those districts. Um, it's the responsibility of the property owner or the representative to demonstrate to the board using architectural drawings, photos, et cetera, to be accomplished. Sides of structures not directly visible from public roads. We allowed some leniency in these styles or details. And then twenty-two nine-one. When new structures are proposed, the planning board should require architectural review to provide that new structures are compatible with the character, design, material, size, configuration, and color of the existing structures in the district. So.
I, the way, you know, the way I, I, I'd like to address that is I, I'm gonna put the, I'm gonna match the paint to my existing, uh, structure, which is a seventeen sixty-eight case attached to a newer, uh, you know, three-story.
That's all, that's white, right?
Uh, no, it's kind of like a slate gray.
Yeah, great color.
Great, okay.
So I matched the color. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with a cubola. And if that doesn't, if that doesn't suffice, then I'll go the added expense of siding it so that it's consistent with my existing construction, which is cloudboard. And it's a, uh, it's a period, uh, uh, you know, architectural finish. The only thing with that.
I mean, to me, that looks like a little metal building, metal building.
It is.
Yeah, it is a metal building, yeah. And I can, I can side one, I'd like to, I, I could side the, uh, street side with the, with the wood siding if you.
There, there are a couple of issues that, that I see. The, the pitch of the roof, the size of the door. I mean, even if you were to put clavards over all of the metal.
Like, Kirk, that won't be visible from one fourteen.
You don't?
No, the, I'm gonna.
You're locating it over here, right?
Yeah, the only thing that you're gonna see.
I'm gonna see this side through here.
Well, you want to see.
And I'm gonna see this side.
It, it will be sort of obstructed, obstructed and obscured because I got a lot of, I got trees out here. I've got the garage, I've got the house. And, uh, really, the only thing I think that, uh, and there's all kinds of vegetation here. I've got.
Yeah.
Lilac bushes. The only thing that, and I, I took some photos. The only thing that really, uh, you're gonna see from one fourteen, you'll see the side. Of the.
And not the end? Either end?
You won't see the ends, you certainly won't see the ends over here.
No, that's not, that's private property.
And you won't see the ends here.
But would you see the ends as you drive along?
I think you might see the back of the building.
No, no, you won't. No, and you won't see.
The back being the, the end opposite the door?
Correct, correct. I think you might see that and part of this, and, and then the, the side facing one fourteen. I think you would see those if you're driving.
No, you won't.
Yes, just for my application.
South, south and east side as you're driving north on one fourteen.
Between a metal building and a pole barn? Roughly, twice as much, half as much?
Cause you can, as you're driving out, you can see the vehicles that are parked here.
I prefer a metal, a metal building is, uh, I think it's, it's, it's more economical.
It does cost less.
I won't do a, a pole barn. I, I, a pole barn is okay for agricultural, but I, I prefer to do the, uh, a structure that's gonna be sitting on a square foot of foundation.
Can't do a pole barn like that?
Well.
Or a.
With a pole barn, what you're relying on, you're relying on the pressure treating. You know, the point four CCA posts in the ground. And, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna go there. I, I've had agricultural.
If you built, if, is it, does it cost more to build the standard, you know, two by six or two by four storage building than a metal building? Is there?
Well, the metal building's probably more money. I, but I, uh, the other thing is, I, I'll disclose, I've already purchased the building. The building's sitting in my, on my property now. But to your point, uh, you, you, you will not see, uh, and we could, uh, you know, we could take a look, but this is all tree along the scorpion line, okay? It, it would be impossible. And there's the, uh, adjacent property here. There's a house and there's what used to be, uh, the power source, uh, place.
Okay.
Okay, you, it would be impossible to see that. And all this, I have these Pacificus. They're, you know, crazy things. I, I, you know, I trim them and they come back with a fury. So I have them here. This is all lilac bushes. And the town has asked me twice to trim these because it's.
Don't you, don't you have a white picket fence out here, Tom?
I have a white picket fence, so you won't see.
The dolls was in the way when you tried to drive out.
Yeah.
I agree with you over here. I think, I, I'll check it when I drive by, but I think there's a, a real view line here.
Yeah.
Between the house and garage to see that. Yeah, I would.
But it's, it's, it's a, uh, it's a nice looking structure. I mean, it's, uh, it's certainly nicer than, uh, you know, like T eleven, B one eleven siding or. I mean, I, I think that, uh, I, I don't think it's going to be a, uh, you know, a stain on the, on the, the building.
Is the con, is this on a high concrete wall? I can't tell from the picture, or is this just different color paint?
No, that's just different color paint.
This application that they're doing.
Still a little bad.
I know. Next application's really wet.
They got it? Okay. I just got some.
I don't know if you heard me earlier, Harry, but I, I don't think we can accept your application's complete. I don't mind talking about it conceptually for a while. There's several items on the checklist bearing this as the property lines. I guess it goes in the name of address there, I didn't see that earlier.
I, you know, I've got the setback from the property line. But some of the, uh, items, quite frankly, I thought were, uh, a, a little bit obvious. Like the, I mean, the setback from the road, uh, that I.
Well, this is the pavement, that's not the road. Right?
Yeah, this is the road. This is one fourteen.
The pavement.
The pavement, yeah.
Where's the right of way?
Well, the right of, even the right of way. I mean, if you figure it to be fifteen feet, certainly, uh, we're quite far, I mean, uh.
There may be a different right of way distance there. One fourteen, kind of Jerry Van Der's, the right of ways.
Yeah, one fourteen, it might be clear into, to be honest, might be clear up to about there.
It's a hundred and fifty feet up at the top of the hill.
Honestly, I, I did not think that. I did not think the town was gonna make me do a, uh, a, a full-blown survey. Uh, this, you know.
You don't need to do a full-blown survey, you could put the.
There's this thing called a waiver too, you can do too, you know. Ask us for a waiver.
A waiver.
For certain regulations. I know we're gonna wanna, we're gonna wanna see the wetlands.
Well, the wetlands, uh.
Well, I mean flagged by a scientist. We, the, the, sixty-three feet, is it sixty-three, is it fifty-one, is it?
Well, correct.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be important to the conservation commission.
I'm a licensed septic designer. I can identify.
I didn't know that.
Hydrogen, hydrogen soils, just as well as anybody, I can tell you. That's the.
Well, in that case, you can flag wetlands.
There's, there's cattails.
There's a, there's a subsection that says you can flag wetlands.
I know.
Okay. So you need to stamp it and say you flagged the wetlands.
I, I do that. But again, I, I'm so far from the, I didn't think it'd be an issue. I didn't know, I didn't anticipate you'd, you'd be, you know, this would be a.
This, this isn't enough, Greg? He's got sixty-three feet here and he's got the wetlands delineated?
He's got an approximate limits of jurisdiction on wetland land. I don't know who did it, I don't know where it came from. Did you do it? Did I do it? Did he do it? No, I paid him the money. Trying, trying to be. I'm not saying it's not good enough, I'm saying he needs to certify so that we know it's good enough. We do have letter from conservation commission. I don't know if you saw this or not, email, excuse me, I got it.
When did you get that?
May tenth. Craig, we reviewed the plan tonight and have some questions. What is the purpose? How and who do you need the wetlands? Should wetlands buffer be shown? Should a building setback from wetlands? Is the building occupied by residents or business? What is the commercial enterprise? So basically, they saw it and didn't understand. Do you plump? I don't have a problem waving an awful lot of items in the checklist. We don't have a waiver request, but I don't think we can wave them just yet. I don't doubt that the stone wall is a property line, but I don't, I don't know that either.
Doesn't need to describe the small.
I'm not trying to be a pain in the, you know what? Need hours of operation, need a construction timetable. Are you gonna have restrooms installed?
No, let me ask you this, why do you need hours of operation? If this was a handyman shop and I was an electrician or plumber, I'd go up to my shop, haul it. Right? Cause I didn't see anything in the, uh, in the ordinance that talked about hours of operation.
Were you looking at the zoning or the site plan regulations?
Uh, zoning.
The site plan also.
But it's a permitted use. And it's already, isn't it already permitted? Why, why do I have to go through the claims of, uh?
Well, it's just like saying a bank's a permitted use in a commercial district, but we gotta check traffic and all everything else too. Just cause permitted use doesn't mean it's right for this property. And hours of operation, you can write down seven in the morning until midnight. You gonna work between midnight and seven in the morning? I don't know. If you sneak out there.
Unfortunately, sometimes I do.
If you sneak out there and go to work, I don't think anybody's gonna say anything anyway. To be honest with you. How long's it gonna take you to put up the building? Why do we need to know? I don't know, but it's on the checklist. I would like to s, we don't have to perform a site walk, but I'd like to see. I drive Quaker Street quite often, but I'd still like to take a look. What can I see through there? And little things like new well, does that mean you're proposing it or?
No, the, uh, that, that's, that was installed a couple of years ago.
Okay. So the septic system's relatively new too?
Uh, ninety-four.
Yeah, to us, that's pretty new.
Yeah. But Botlet's still had the O N K, huh? That's the, the site plan I listed from Botlet's, uh, is, is what. I mean, it was, what you're looking at in terms of site plan, that was good enough for the septic system. I figured it'd be good enough, I mean, um, by inspection, I mean all the setback.
I think with about three hours of work, this would be good enough to be plumped.
If the view from right here, looking at.
No, and that's, that's, I, yeah, I, I guess, I don't know.
You can see.
Approximately property line. Your stamp. It's not me. I'll wave it the rest of the way.
And fill out the forms. Yeah, you should.
Or else I'd give you this.
Okay.
There's a waiver form in the package, um. And. Fill them out for what you want. Probably oughta make sure that you show what, revise the picture of the building to show what you're gonna do. As far as I'm concerned, you don't have to put clavards on that, you could put vertical board and bat and siding.
Yeah, but see, then it wouldn't match.
No, but it's, it, it wouldn't match the house directly, but it would be consistent with the barn of that period, which might not have been clavarded.
Honestly, Kirk, yeah, Neil, I, I, I go with the platform because I don't like board and bat. I, you know what I mean, it's.
Got it.
I'd rather spend the money, because I, my place is attractive and.
Yes, very.
Does look the period, so, uh, that's what I would do.
What's the roof made of?
Metal.
Standing seam?
Standing seam and, uh, I went with the, uh, I went with the, the charcoal, uh, gray. So it looks, it's got the slate. Now, my roof is, uh, like a charcoal, yeah. It's a, it's, it's a nice looking roof. It's, it's pretty dark.
Are you gonna have traffic coming in and out both ways?
Yeah, right now I have, uh, this is, this is a, yeah, this is a garage. And I have traffic off Quaker. And, uh, I have an entrance here off of one fourteen and then another entrance over there.
Is that your fire pond?
It's not really a fire pond. I, I don't know why it's called. I, I took that from Botlet's septic drawing. You couldn't, there's no suction, the.
Freeze the salt in the winter.
Now it's all cattails and, you know, it's, it's, uh, in another twenty years, it's gonna be, you know, filled up with vegetation.
That was a fire pond when I was a kid.
That was?
But it's not used now.
The parking space is shown on here, are these the existing parking spaces? And do we need to add any more if there's no business?
No, those are existing and, uh, and, and that, I think that covers, uh, what I need. The, uh, in the office, it's Michelle and I and Alfred, uh, was when he works for me also. He's, he's in and out. Everybody else, uh, telecommutes. I've got an engineer in Danvis, Mass. And I haven't seen him for a year and a half. I have.
Typical engineer.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, I get his timesheet every week at his shop, you know. But the, uh, then I got. But the, then I got technicians that live, one lives in Dunstable, Mass. And he'll stop by, drop off a soil sample, drop off reports and say hi. And they even, they don't even get their checks physically anymore, it's all, you know, direct deposit.
You gonna have restrooms in the building?
No. No, I've got.
Water?
No.
Electricity?
Electricity, yeah. But everything we use is 110. I may, I haven't talked to the power company yet, I may do, uh, I'm certainly not gonna do.
Three days.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go at that expense, so.
Out of curiosity, if this is part of your business, why didn't you attach it?
I thought about it, but if you look at how, see, my, this is like the old style, you know, they used to call it. Big house, little house, po- house, bond, you know, and at one time, I believe that, well, before I, I remember, this, this was actually a bond.
This is the one you've converted to your own?
Yeah, that was converted by Monroe before I bought it. This, this, uh, burnt, it was a bond that burnt and he rebuilt it. So this is the main house and this is the connector. And then this is the, uh, the bond. It kinda still looks like a bond, it did at our store. But no, it, it, there's no way to do it. And it would've been obnoxious because it would've been this big, long thing. It, it just would not have looked at all pleasing. And, and then the roof lines, you couldn't, you know, do anything with the roof lines to make any sense, so. So I thought a standalone facility was best. And I don't know, you know, I, I, I may, I've downsized, this sounds good right now. If I get another energy spirit, I may abandon the whole thing and go back to Manchester and, you know, take on ten thousand square feet of lab space and this becomes a place to store my, my, my old practice. You know, I, I don't know.
You could buy a bigger boat?
But, no. I'm done with that.
I got one for you.
But, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
The other thing is, I, I have employees that are probably gonna take over, take over the show. And they, they may decide that they wanna, you know, go on to bigger and better things and bigger lab space. In Goffstown, we had five thousand square feet of lab space. And we were testing soil and concrete all over the land. That was just a, you know, it's been downsized considerably. I stood on my own. The wind was taking out of my sails. Craig, will we need waivers or whatever?
Well, there's none requested.
Help the guy out and tell him which ones you should ask for.
I thought I was.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I got a lot of things here already.
I've been a registered engineer now for, oh, two years, I've never done a site.
I don't blame you.
I don't know how you guys do it. Geoltech is a little different.
Do you have any outside lighting?
I'll have a, I'll probably have a light. I'll probably have two lights, I'll have like an overhead light and then I'll have one.
On the door?
Next to the door.
Probably can't read my reading. Are you sorry?
No.
Craig?
Yes?
Put this mic over there.
If you have any questions, Chip can sometimes speak.
Sometimes not.
Hey, all I cared about was the signings, yeah, you'll have no problem at all. Make it look like an old building.
You can, you can do this in less than three hours, I've written most of it out for him now. I think we all know where you are if we need a sidewalk, we're gonna drive by, take a look to see if we can see the building.
Yeah.
You see some weird strange car driving through your parking lot, it's probably us.
That's fine.
And I'm not gonna open up the public hearings, we haven't accepted the application as complete yet, so I can't public comment, excuse me.
Continue to the twenty-second.
I think so, yes. Do we have motion?
No move.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Thing? I think you pass your hand. I'll give you all this stuff back, I scribbled all over this, too. And I apologize if it's wet.
Okay, no, that's fine, I, I. I appreciate, thank you.
We'll see you in a month.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
What's next? Reroute, revise subdivision lot line adjustment plan for Frank and Jennifer Taranti in the town of Ware. Tax cap four oh two lot thirty-one and thirty-two.
Can we go to Merrill? I'd like to go to Merrill. Cause he's here in the real.
Okay, we can go out of words. I don't problem that. Instead of that, we're gonna go to lot line adjustment Cynthia A. Merrill Revocable Trust, two oh four Dustin Cavern Road, map four eleven, lot one twenty-two. And Brandon and Diana S. Merrill, two oh six Dustin Cavern Road, map four eleven, one twenty-two, two. And now you messed up my whole order of ways from here, cause that's in the document. I went through this one and I think we have a waiver request for cocoa wetland soils, the usual lot line adjustment. Waivers? If I understand right, you have a little, uh, lot one twenty-two dot two has no frontage and you're making it bigger, so.
Which? One twenty-two?
One twenty-two, two, right here.
That's an existing lot?
Yes.
Sixteen acres?
No.
No, existing ones, something.
Am I reading it wrong? Looks like sixteen point sixty-four.
That's after the law. Currently, it's two point seven two. It's just this little area. This lot includes all this. They're gonna put a line there. Existing two point seven two, proposed sixteen point six four. Either way, it's two non-conforming lots together. The non-conforming unit doesn't increase.
Actually, the front lot's not non-conforming.
It doesn't have fifty feet of frontage.
Oh, totally.
Maybe it does. No, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
How does, how does this give frontage to the second lot?
It doesn't.
It doesn't, it has, the second lot currently has, has an easement to it. It's gonna continue to have easement to it.
Same easement?
Yes.
Art, what's the purpose of this? What's accomplished?
I think that they are selling lot one twenty-two and Brandon would like to have more land, so he's adding thirteen point nine two acres to his property. The front piece is, is being sold, Brandon, have the person to buy the front piece all, all the way around me. We're making a nice square.
And you can still have access?
Yeah. We have the same needed right of way.
Chip, do you have other copies?
Um, I probably could find some somewhere in the building.
We just solved the problem. Bruce was generous.
Thank you, Bruce.
Isn't this a no-brainer?
Yes. Do you have, is that a motion?
Neil, you're catching on.
I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Does that include the waivers for photography of wetlands?
Who's the waivers? Pass the minute.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, the same? Motion carried? Mr. Susti.
We all have the gist of it pretty well, I guess we're adjusting the lines between two lots, making one line, three lines go away, the dashed lines. And creating that new line by six to lot. And lot one twenty-two is gonna be ten acres when it's done. Lot one twenty-two point two will be sixteen point six four acres and the axis, the axis doesn't change, the frontages don't change, or easement doesn't change.
Want a motion?
No, but yeah, cause I do have a couple of comments.
Okay.
New dad that wrote seventy-seven to class two.
Say this again?
Route seventy-seven to class two road.
You want me to write that?
Yes, please. Just, you know, you normally write down class five or class two or something.
It says state highway.
Well, yeah, I put state highway, huh?
Could be a class one. Or a class four.
Class two paved, yep.
While you're doing that. This, I know this isn't, this lot isn't part of your lot line adjustment, just one down like four. Four eleven, one twenty-two, one. But he uses that same driveway, right? Now, did you show where his driveway comes off that?
Where the driveway comes off?
Yeah, cause that, this, this house is about to be taken off that driveway.
There are three guys using that same house, using that same?
They've been doing that for.
I didn't even know that.
That's why I thought you were gonna show it.
I assume there's an easement to that second driveway?
There is an easement, I don't know why it would be relevant to this plan.
It's relevant to the owner of lot one twenty-two.
This is the lot that you're selling?
You're just saying it should be shown, that driveway.
Cause that guy could be.
Whoever's buying lot one twenty-two, whoever's planning it, should see that easement.
You're supposed to show all easements on the lot, and that's an easement that's there, that's not showing.
Technically, when you create this new lot line, there won't be an easement through that part of it anymore? Because you can't have an easement over yourself?
Don't pick her up, it's soft, it's just going to ruin.
You should have easement.
Oh, the easement beyond the line?
Beyond the new line, yes. Doesn't exist.
Still written in the D. I know what you're saying, but.
It doesn't exist. And I'd put one of those little Z things.
I have a Z there, don't I?
Down on lot one twenty-two.
Oh, on one twenty-two.
That's what I saw. I'll change the easement, add a Z thing. Give her the easement in one lot, what he's buying, that, that's two.
I'm just gonna make a motion for approval with those conditions.
Second.
Did you catch those conditions, ma'am?
I will catch them.
You were?
I will catch them.
Oh. When I say them again?
Yes.
She's getting good at. Class two to be added beside Route seventy-seven. Add the easement from the existing driveway to lot one twenty-two dot one. Add a Z across the existing driveway in lot one twenty-two. And to eliminate the portion of easement that's gonna be on the new lot, one twenty-two dot two.
You want me to take that right off?
Yeah, it's gone. Actually, no. Strike that last one, cause it's not gone until a D changes hands.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say.
You said, no, you said it's in the D, you didn't say it doesn't.
Well.
You should've corrected me.
Yeah.
So three. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, the same? Pass your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They don't have to come back, just pick those things.
Right.
Did you wanna say what we're doing? I'm gonna ask Art what we're doing before we ever get into the whole.
Thank you.
Application complete thing, because I, I may have an issue here. Not a personal issue. Are we trying to discontinue a portion of the road, which is the Hammerhead?
Yes.
And give it to the, the budding owner? You can't do that. That's up to the town vote.
Really?
Yes.
It doesn't take a town vote to accept a road?
Doesn't take a town vote to accept a road?
No. Per hard road to travel, I'm not sure we have it booked somewhere. The complete discontinuance of a portion of the local class five, oh, class four, five, or six highway required a clear vote of legislative body. RSA 23143. In most towns, that means a vote of town meeting upon an article properly inserted into the warrant of the meeting by the select board or by petition. In shorter towns, you have evidence. Action by the select board as a governing body is never sufficient to discontinue a public highway once it has been created. There's a court case taken.
What's the RSA?
23143.
231?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. You can have this, you want a copy of the book. Mentioned in the court case or two. Cause my theory when I first saw this was the road is not a lot, so you can't do a lot line adjustment. The road is the road.
On the original plan, was shown as a, wasn't shown as a temporary thing or anything, was shown as a hammer?
No.
No, shown as a hammer.
No, the hammerhead part of the road.
Yeah, okay.
What's the reason for wanting to make the change?
I don't know, they just wanted it as part of the lot, they thought it would be easy to do, I guess.
Is that lot developed?
Uh, there's a buyer for it. And he might wanna use that for his driveway, which I guess the town wants to give him a, I guess they could give him a driveway there, I don't know that.
He could have, he could have a driveway off-
You can't have a driveway off a hammerhead.
We're looking at the hammerhead.
You cannot?
No.
Is that a zoning ordinance, that's a city regulation?
I think it's only-
West River Bay.
There's no pavement there, they've already eliminated the pavement. It's gone. The town's quit sort of eliminated it. It's nonexistent, I mean, it's not, it's there, but it's not.
The deeded rights are there, but physically isn't there, what you're saying.
It was there, it was paved and the town took, removed the pavement, cause they're not gonna use it.
The town is not using the Hammerhead?
No. Cause the road goes straight through it. So that's why we thought it was like a no-brainer, we do. They've sort of discontinued it, you're right. But to actually deed it-
Really, the town owns the land, so the town would have to-
The town's ready to deed it, I don't know. Naomi said, well, she said do this, but, yeah.
All right. Why can't, why can't they put their driveway and abut it to that part of the Hammerhead?
Well, they probably could, yeah, I guess they probably could.
They can.
And not even own it.
They don't, they don't need to own it, it's town property. They're driving over the town property to get to the road.
To get to the-
In fact, it's probably still-
You mean to get to the lot?
It's about town property, it's the town road.
That's correct, and they, they abut that at the end of the Hammerhead.
And you can't use town property for a driveway?
Can't use the Hammerhead for driveway.
It's specific in the ordinance?
Yes.
Had that same problem up on the top of Brown Ridge Road.
Is that the only place for a driveway?
I don't know if that's true, my driveway comes off, my driveway comes off the Hammerhead. I got two driveways coming off the Hammerhead.
I don't think it came off the corner, you can come off the-
You can come off the side of it, you can't come off the end of it.
Right, you can't come off the end of it, you can come off the side of it.
Yes.
Don't tell me I can't use my driveway.
It's kind of a silly way.
You can't get home, you can't use your-
I'm not gonna give it to you there. Okay, so we're going away because of what you're saying here?
Yes, so you were drawing the application? We're gonna give up the chip and writing, so we-
So I get some of my fees back? I don't think I have that many.
It's hard to give you back fees, cause most of them have been spent on notifications and public notices in mail. No, you don't get any of that back.
You get your fees back, but then I get paid for all this.
I'll take my MyLar recording back.
Yeah. Yeah, and the L chip fee comes back.
And what?
And the L chip. I think you paid that one. I'll see what I can give you back.
Well, you spent a hundred, $10 per-
We'll go out for cocktails, I'll figure out what I can give you back.
By the time you're finished, Art, you'll get nothing back. You'll be broke.
We'll drink up the profits.
Thank you.
One out of three in bed.
Yeah.
The only house I know that's minutes of May 11th, Mr. Kirk made a motion to accept the minutes. One page, so it is.
Sure, let's do it.
I'll have a look at it, but-
Did we ever take the 27th?
Sure, let's do it. I'll have a look at it, but-
Did we ever take the 27th?
April 27th?
I wasn't here for that, it was-
Yes, it says in the minutes of May 11th, Mr. Kirk made a motion to accept the minutes.
I guess it's done then.
I thought I sent you that.
Scared me.
That's probably what I printed out. It still said draft at the top, so that's why I was-
This is the minutes of 429, is that correct?
May 11th?
No, the ones that were accepted, is that the ones you were talking about?
No, that was 427, that was, the sidewalk was the 429. This is the, this is the 27th that I was on vacation, that John did.
Oh no, those are a long, those are gonna take a while.
But they were perfect.
Yes, they were.
Did you print them out there?
I have, hold on a second.
They're gonna take a while. I blew it all over. I'm not gonna fire you.
Damn.
Those are not, I mean, I don't know how accurate they are, but they certainly are pointed.
John did, you gotta be good.
Yeah, that's what I said.
At least you got the correct verbiage in there, probably.
So are we doing May 11th, sir?
Well, there is one problem here, and I can't believe-
I'm doing May 11th.
I cannot believe that this, these minutes were done by John.
He didn't spell it out.
No, instead of the word- Instead of the word no, he has the word two. He doesn't make those mistakes. This is Frank Burl, Rockland Road, stated he has two problem with the application.
It happens.
And we thought, and we thought you were infallible.
That's what you get for thinking, my friend. We make a motion to approve the May 11th notes.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same, done. Against, nobody, past 401. Let's wait two weeks for that one. Mostly formatting thing. Is this yours?
No.
So who do I, who do I need to send the approved May 11th notes to?
To me.
Just to you?
Yeah. I send them, I then send them to the, to the town clerk and all the people that have to post them.
Well, and that's what I thought, I didn't think I needed to send to Naomi or Mary or anything.
No, I do, I do that, but if you send these guys the-
Drafts.
The drafts.
We usually get the final and the drafts, I don't really care if it'll go to the final, but-
Yeah, I don't care about finals, the drafts are handy though.
Yes. If you can send it straight to the drafts, right, that saves Chip time in his hard day.
Yep.
So drafts to everybody, files to-
I'm moving adjourned.
I knew you were gonna do that. You have a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.